All the meeting to order and ask for approval of the May 11th minutes.
Will they be approved, has submitted?
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Second was Marcy. Uh, any discussion of those minutes? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. Council E is on report. Councilman Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the city council met as scheduled for the June 7th meeting, 7:00 PM. There was, uh, an appointment of, um, during, uh, for a succession plan for Chief Merschman, uh, to be replaced by Brian Sandow, uh, the sergeant who's been with the Breezy Point PD since, uh, 1999.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, additionally, there was, uh, some discussion about the golf cart rodeo on June 19th that will also, uh, um, uh, have the community center task force open house, first open house, piggybacking behind it. Uh, so that was, that was something that was, uh, mentioned as well. As, uh, some new equipment that is going to be purchased for the, uh, Breezy Point PD as well. Looks like an upgrade in technology and some newer, uh, uh, squad, uh, squad computers, uh, tough books. So, um, that pretty much covers everything.
Any questions of Councilman Miller?
Do I understand that the mayor is out of town on Zoom?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor Rogencamp appeared via Zoom, um, for the June meeting. Uh, he did spearhead the meeting, uh, but yes, he was remote.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mark. Next on the agenda is open forum number one, and it appears as though we can close open forum number one. Patrick, what do we, what do we do with the next agenda item without her here?
Let's, uh, maybe, yeah, I can answer that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Let's, uh, let's delay that.
Okay.
And hopefully she comes to address
Okay.
the commission. Let's go to the next agenda item and talk about sheds.
So we'll move to, uh, item G, discussion and, and continued discussion of storage sheds and impervious coverage. Jerry, do you want to take us into this?
After the, the last meeting, we've, uh, we've kind of broached the subject of what to do with sheds in some of these, uh, tight neighborhoods per se. And the fact that the, our ordinance encourages cleanup and, and, uh, storage inside and all that kind of stuff, but yet the ordinance wouldn't allow technically a shed on some of these, uh, lots that are currently occupied by small cabins and, and are currently over the 25% maximum impervious coverage. After our discussion, you asked that, uh, we give you some examples of how we could do that. I think, uh, in any case, there would need to be an, an ordinance change of some sort. And on the last page of that, the first two pages are the existing memo. The last pages are, uh, the options that, that I came up with at this point. And I'm sure there, you know, you may have more than this type of option to consider, but I think this is the start of the discussion of should we go that direct? Number one, should we go that direction? And then number two, how do we do it?
How do you enforce it?
Pardon?
How do you enforce it?
Well, we would still require a zoning permit for, for sheds. I don't think the reinforcement's a real big issue.
Isn't there a couple places around that have a couple? Isn't it only one allowed, right? There's some places have two, is what I'm saying.
Actually, there are some lots where you can have more than one.
Oh, okay.
Um, you know, and, and I would tell you that the way the ordinance is, is written, you can have accessory structures. And it's an accumulative square footage total that you can have. So if you had, and, and in most cases, it's 1,280 square feet is the maximum that you can have on a lot. And, and that wouldn't apply to the Circle Drive because there's no way in heck that you, you have that type of, uh, size. But you could have three or four of the small 10 by 12s and still be under that cumulative total.
Okay.
And I'll give you a good example of that is right down along County Road 4, um, around Robin and Ren. In that area, there's one right against the highway that I think has got three of them.
Yeah.
But I, in the, the only, and, and that's still underneath the 25%, and it's still underneath the cumulative total, so that really doesn't come into play. What we're really talking about is some of those areas that have, that are reached the, the maximum impervious coverage already, where it wouldn't be eligible to be done without some kind of a variance. Staff thought was that a variance for a 10 by 12 shed is, is probably a pretty cumbersome and expensive way to handle a $50 permit. Long as it, the shed costs you a thousand dollars, it $50 seems like an exorbitant rate to, to charge for something, uh, that's actually helping to clean up the neighborhood.
Mr. Chair?
Patrick?
If I might to, I mean, when we look at the, uh, Circle Drive neighborhood specifically and talk about that one, I did some talking with the current, uh, proprietors, or the used to be, I guess, the resort owners, uh, the Spizos, and talked to them. I said specifically, when these cabins were built, I have to bet that they were part of the resort. And the resort maintained them, not just because they provided the water and the city later put it in the sewer, but he said, yeah, that's exactly what happened. And then 50s or 40s, they started selling them off piece by piece. And so instead of the resort coming in with the lawn mowing group coming in and taking care of everything, now individual property owners have to do that. Now individual property owners have to find spaces to park. And so that's what lead us to believe that maybe we should start looking at this as area specific too.
I think the other thing that, uh, goes with that is that, uh, at the time that it was a resort and/or when they first went into private ownership, piece by piece, uh, most of the use was one, two weekends a month, that type of thing. It wasn't every day like is today. There's actually a change and a transformation going on in that neighborhood where there are some folks that are computing, uh, converting those places by installing their own well to 12-month-a-year occupancy, which is something that never happened before because they turned off the water and, in October, and they never opened it up again till late April. So there, there is a transformation happening. Along with, the more time you spend there, the more stuff you accumulate, the more toys you get. And, uh, they just don't have a place to put them.
Am I correct that our action on this would be a recommendation to the council?
Would be a recommendation, ultimately, yes.
Okay.
Would be a recommendation to the council.
Other questions or comments? Marcy's gonna have one, I can tell.
This one's kind of in, is, it's an interesting debate in my head because, um, there was a shift and I see that up there. But I also look at it going, how does this apply in total when we see even more of a shift of more people moving up here full-time in other areas, not just Circle Drive? But other areas where now they want garages where maybe they didn't need a garage before because they were only up on weekends and they don't have the ability to put up a garage. I, I just look at what's the bigger scheme of, of how we're maybe handling, you know, our full-time residents in a, it's a seasonal area. And all this would be the end of maybe requests for that H R may turn into garages and other structures. So I'm just kind of debating over in my head whether it's a bigger picture item or if this is just a one-off, like just deal with Circle Drive.
I don't think that Circle Drive is the only area where that comes into play. I think this area right over here between, uh, this building and the resort, uh, where we have some, some, some very small lots. We've got some new houses that have been built in there. Those houses actually are, have been required to do some, um, innovative ways of becoming, uh, pervious surfaces. They, they have to do some expensive work in order to do driveways and, and that type of thing because they've occupied the whole 25% of their, their lot with dwelling. Dwelling and, and single-car garage in most cases. I see that as being another place where having a, a shed in the backyard is probably something that's going to be asked for many times in the future. I see that coming anyway. And the other thing, you, you, these, specifically this neighborhood where the new houses are going up in between, they're, they're going in without decks. Decks will be the next thing that comes along with that, that whole deal. Some folks have already done detached decks with the subsurface, uh, stuff that allows them to, uh, consider it as pervious.
Roger, did you?
No.
Lee?
No, no questions.
Tracy?
Uh, in, in our sandy soil in this area, with the exception of something that runs into the road in a low spot, is the impervious nature a serious issue? I mean, I, I realize it's in the rules and regulations, but is it really necessary?
I think, I think the rule is there because that, anything within, uh, a thousand feet of the, of a lake is considered shoreline and, and that's a statewide type thing. But that's a statewide rule that doesn't take into consideration the type of soils that are in, in different regions. And I think I told you the, the last week in one of the other former communities that I lived in and, and worked in, the, the soil was very heavy clay, very dense, and, and water did not permeate very well and it, and it ran off and, and did a lot of localized flooding and, and little 10-year storms were, there was a lot of that type of thing happening. Here, I don't think you have that, that issue hardly at all because of the pervious nature of the sand that we have. We're, we're very fortunate that we have sand. Probably not when it's really dry like this, but normally it's, uh, very fortunate to be that way.
So, in, in my sense, the impervious issue is not the important one to me. Important one to me is actually, uh, the, the look and settling, setting of the storage. And I would, you know, I, I don't know how you codify it, but I would like to see the, the storage sheds be of a material that is consistent, that is the same as the house.
Siding?
Siding, and, and the roof be the same shingle or same material. So it looks like it's a planned deal, not a Menards buy it off the shelf storage building. Now, how you do that, I don't know, but...
Mark, do you have any comments?
With the sheds, you have several different variations. They can be both, um, metal, wood, you know, plastic or the durable synthetic product. So I agree that matching them to the home would camouflage them in a way to make them look more like they're a part of the structure rather than a freestanding in nature. I personally would think that line of sight or visibility, um, between crossroads where it's bottlenecked in the, some of these areas would be a bigger concern. But I think that also leads back to what Jerry was saying with impervious, uh, coverage.
Jerry, the, the wording on that last page, you, you do have words that say, constructed of materials compatible with the principal structure.
Uh, is, is that a standard way to describe that?
Very hard to enforce.
Yeah. Is it possible to be more specific?
Well, I think maybe, maybe, uh, the easier thing to enforce would be a color. That, that might be the easiest one to enforce, uh, and probably the most acceptable from the resident's standpoint. Having an architectural review type situation, I think, might be going overboard a little bit. I, I understand where Tracy's coming 100%. But it might be almost impossible.
So the, so the alternative would be to make it very difficult to have any more structures, period?
Well, that we have today.
Well... So i- is, as you drive down 4, south of, uh, the corner here, just south of the, uh, uh, traditional golf course, or just beyond Dove, I guess it is, or maybe beyond that, there's a place that's got, looks, first of all, it looks like a quonset with plastic over it, right on, right on the highway.
That's the first one.
Yeah. It's got that, and then it's got stacks of wood and, I mean, it looks, it is less desirably looking for the entrance to the city.
I, I think you will always find some of those aesthetic situations that could use some sprucing up. Our ordinance actually exempts wood piles. That's called out pretty specific, that that's something that's allowable to have in your up north character.
How, how about the plastic covered sheds?
It, they're, they're considered a temporary structure and, and if we get a complaint, we go and ask them to remove them.
Three years. It's not very temporary.
We've never had a, I don't know of a complaint about that.
You're talking the, the, uh...
It, it looks like a qua, you know, metal, um...
Metal frame with a...
Nursery frame with a white tarp and, and, and then they got a bunch of other trucks parked in the yard and it's... Yeah.
Any other comments? Should we ask the question?
Do you have some? Well, the question that I'm going to ask you is, do you want to allow sheds and
Right.
an exception for some of these sheds? If the answer is yes, then the next question is, are one of these alternatives acceptable? And should we pursue one of these alternatives?
Do you mind if we start with you, Roger?
I suppose it wouldn't be possible to shrink the size down, especially, uh, you know, in areas that, like you say, they're just about one parking spot and a little shed is all they have for, like an eight by 10.
I, I think you can, I think you could, uh, do that. That might be a good compromise. We went on the...
Yeah, the 10 by 12.
Because we had a definition, we, we were using the existing ordinance because we had a definition already.
Right.
But certainly you could, uh, you could take the red areas and just say an eight by 10 or a, uh, an eight by eight is exempt.
So those four streets you, like Shoreview, they're not allowed?
Mark?
Shoreview Lane, that's one of the four lanes that we, we wanted, besides Circle Drive, or...
Well, that's, that gets down to one of the alternatives. If the alternative is to include some of the other zones or all zones.
Right.
Then Shoreview Lane becomes a player. If it, if you're saying that you can only be in the R3 zone, which is basically this area down here and
Right.
in the Circle Drive area, then Shoreview is not in play.
It's more complicated than I thought.
Marcy?
I'm not inclined at this point to make any changes unless we hear a lot of requests for it. And I believe when we asked last time, there weren't a lot of requests for it yet. Am I correct?
You want to repeat that?
I think the answer is, um, what happened was we issued two permits and that started us in reviewing this. Those probably shouldn't have been issued.
Okay.
And so then, and then additionally, we have at least two more that we're working with right now.
Okay, so it is a bigger, or it is coming up?
It is a bigger question.
Will any of these four options, or any of the options, two, three, or four, resolve the issues that are coming up right now?
Probably. Not all of them, but, uh, probably.
If we made this a widespread, because I'd rather, in my opinion, if we did this, it should apply everywhere, not just to one location. Be very negative to doing that other than the visual look if we're seeing environmentally... Does this work better?
Yes.
I feel like it's touching my lips. Here we go. Is there any environmental or any other impact that we're not seeing? Is it really truly just more of a visual impact at this point?
It probably has more to do with the visual impact than anything. If we made it citywide, it probably doesn't hurt anything at all because most of those lots are going to be under the 25% anyway and it would be, they'd be eligible without, you know, going with the exemption. It's just the tight ones that become the, the, the issues. And we've zeroed in on Circle Drive because that's where some of the things are happening. I've identified this area down here as a potential for some of that to happen. But if you go, you know, north of here, where we have two and a half acre lots, or acre lots, it's not even an issue. So you could have an exemption for all zones and most of it it wouldn't even apply to. And that might be the simplest way to do it, quite frankly. And that, the simplest way to do that would be the, the, uh, the second option, where you revise the definition and just say that one is exempt.
Are, are you, is so, is, are we looking for a motion or are we looking for a, a... I mean, do you, do you want a motion to accept one versus the other, or are we just going to continue to chit chat?
I think we're going to need a motion to recommend to the city council.
I don't know if you need a motion.
Oh, okay.
I'd really like some consensus as far as one of these options and consider. Then we would put it in front of you in, in written form as an ordinance or recommendation to the council.
Jerry, do you think there's 100% compliance with the existing wording? Or are people putting up sheds basically where they feel like it?
I think a lot of times the shed comes in before they do the permit, but I think in most cases there is a permit that's at least applied for.
Okay.
It may be after the fact or the, you know, the guy with the truck is, is in front of my house. Oops, I gotta go down to City Hall and get a shed or a permit for that.
Well, I would think in, in some cases, people would not even understand that they need a permit.
Well, that's, the, the assumption in a lot of cases are because it's portable or I can move it around, that I don't need a permit for it. That's not necessarily the case. One of the things that, the reason we, we actually do a zoning permit for a shed is because they're allowed to be three feet from the property line. We want people to identify where those property lines are so that they're not putting the shed on somebody else's property.
Exactly.
And I'm dealing with one of those right now.
Okay.
And it's really hard to get people to, to move it after, you know, they, all of a sudden, find out that their property line isn't where they've been mowing for the last 15 years. And it doesn't, it doesn't bode well for good relationships between neighbors, especially when there's new neighbors moving in.
So the permitting process gives the city control?
Yes.
With that, with all that being said, I would, I would enjoy seeing language that would allow it to be one shed and have it not be restricted by zone with some detail in making it aesthetically as pleasing as possible to the current homestead. Like if it's color, however we can word it in a way that is not too ambiguous and it is enforceable.
Let me quickly get other people's reaction to that to see if we can come to consensus fairly quickly. Roger, what, what do you think of it?
That's fine, but somebody could build a red one or a purple one and be made out of siding, not the plastic topi ones, you know? I don't know. I don't, how do you, how do you?
I think the easiest one to enforce is going to be color.
Color?
I don't think that siding is going to be very easy to, to enforce, especially with some of these things that are pre-built and come in.
So what color would be okay?
Pardon?
What color would be okay? Any color?
Similar to the house.
Yeah. Well, that'd be great if you could do that. I mean, if people would do it.
Well, again, I think, you know, if the, if the, if a structure comes off the truck and it's brown
Yeah.
and the house is white, it's pretty easy to put a coat of white paint on that.
All right.
That one is, that one is pretty easy. You're not going to get a lot of pushback from that. But you're going to get a lot of pushback if, if that shed comes with a metal siding and the house is, is wood siding. You're going to get all kinds of pushback about that.
Lee, your reaction to Marcy's proposal?
The only concern is if somebody were to get, you know, one of those, the plastic, you know, the heavy rubber-made ones, whatever, and typically they're gray, you know? If somebody wanted to buy one of those that maybe couldn't afford a, a wood shed, I guess, you know, then we're, you know, or would you say something neutral that would kind of match, you know what I mean?
Can you paint the plastic ones?
I don't know.
Could try, but...
Could you omit the plastic ones? I mean, could it basically say?
Chairman, sorry, may I? Yes, they do make polymer paints that will cover plastic. However, in the changing weather conditions in the state of Minnesota, the cold is ultimately going to crack the paint, cause it to peel off. So that helps to answer the question.
Can you omit rubber-made ones? You say, hey, we don't think that's appropriate for...
I, I think you can, you can paint just about anything, quite frankly. That's why I think color you can enforce. That's why I think color you can enforce. The materials are going to be very hard to enforce, and it's going to be very hard to tell somebody that he's got to have a metal building, or, you know, one or the other. It's just going to be, that's going to be a nightmare.
Jerry, what kind of wording are you thinking about in terms of the color?
Similar to, similar to the principal structure.
Tracy, any comments?
No.
I should have asked at the very beginning, are you in agreement with what Mercy is proposing, Roger?
Yeah.
I am in agreement with Mercy.
Sounds like we've got consensus.
Thank you.
For, for what Mercy said.
Thank you. I'm fine.
Okay.
That's basically the second option.
Yes.
And revising the charts and adding the color thing, and I think we're okay.
Good deal. Then we will go back to item E, which is a public hearing to consider an interim use request for a home occupation for wellness clinic. Interestingly enough, in parentheses, Chinese medicine and occupanture. I will open the public hearing, and I assume you are Star. Star, would you come up and introduce yourself and
Sure.
give us a little presentation of what you have in mind?
I didn't know I was going to have to do a presentation.
We're, we're pretty.
Sorry, hold the microphone. Star Jarvis, 8385 Sun Valley Drive. We've been here, my brother and I have been in Breezy for three years. Coming up in October, we're doing a rent to own. That should come together by the end of September, hopefully, if all goes well. I'm a Crosslake girl, was, I'm a Starca, so I was raised in Crosslake. So this is my stomping grounds, I consider. By trade, I've been a registered nurse for 35-plus years. ER is my main specialty in nursing. And then I came upon, being, I did a lot of living and working out of the United States and living in the U.S. Virgin Islands in St. Thomas. And so I was kind of removed from the whole movement for alternative medicine. And when I came back, I started doing traveling nursing again. And I did a job in California and was introduced to the Chinese medicine, traditional Chinese medicine, they call it. And became more interested from there and decided I'd get my masters in that instead of, I'd get my masters in eastern medicine instead of western medicine that I'd been doing my whole career. And it was a really nice, I'm trying to transition out of nursing anyway, because I'm getting older, and ER is a really, really tough job. So I'm thrilled to be able to do traditional Chinese medicine. We can solve a lot, now I'm selling my, now I'm selling my skills here. There's a lot of things we can treat with traditional Chinese medicine that we don't treat with western medicine. We just, we just don't. We throw pills or pharmaceuticals at it. So this is a whole new, refreshing approach to healthcare. A lot of it is preventative, but I'll say since I've started, I've seen some unbelievable things. Patients coming to me that were not helped with western medicine, which just even makes you more in tune with the medicine and wanting to help people. So that's kind of where I'm at. I did share office space with Dr., oh no, I'm drawing a blank. Doctor, the doctor in Crosslake, who has his own little business. He's doing a different approach to medicine as well. You have like a membership. The doctor is Ian, I think is what he goes by. I shared office space with him for a while, but I was going, having to drive to Crosslake to do it. And it just became, and it was in the middle of the winter, I, people weren't going out as much, and I just kind of said, okay, I'm not going to do that anymore. Let me just sit back and figure this out. I have 3,000 square feet in my house. The bottom floor is, it's beautiful. It's a walkout basement and very easily accessible. And that's when I decided, rather than working with Bruce in Crosslake, that maybe I could start something for myself with a home clinic. And that's when I came to you, to see if this would work. I've applied for the ability to take veterans insurance, and I just got that okay a couple of days ago. I think I dropped that off just to put it with my file. So I'm waiting now to see if in fact this would work, to have this clinic, and I'm looking forward to getting started.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, let's see. Roger, any questions at this point?
Well, I mean, what will your hours be? Is it like eight to five?
Okay, so because I'm doing, because this is a new business venture for me, and because I'm doing the rent to own, and I need, I need a job on paper. So I'm going back to nursing and I'm getting a job for like three days a week. And that will be, I'll be one of the RNs at Whitefish at the Lakes. That'll be about three days a week. So I'll really only have two days a week that'll be open for the clinic. And I, sorry?
At your house, right?
At my house, yeah. And at this point, that would be fine. And if a year from now, everything is going well, I might back off with my hours as an RN and put more hours into being a practitioner of medicine, Chinese medicine.
So if we approve this, this could, goes out for three years, right, Jerry?
It can go out as far as you want it to go. Typically, it goes out for five years.
Is it five years?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I was wrong.
I guess, following up on your question, is this an eight to five thing? Is it a seven to 330? Is it?
It's an eight to five. I'm flexible, so if someone, you know, would want you to come earlier or later, it would be easy, but eight to five would be my, two days a week.
Do you have any, do you have employees?
No, no.
And you would not have any employees?
No.
Okay.
Just myself.
Okay.
Single practitioner.
Okay. One, one other question?
Yes.
Are you licensed by somebody to do this?
Absolutely, yes.
And by who?
I'm licensed by the National Council of, it's called NCCAOM, which is the last is Oriental Medicine, but it's a national registration. Then I have my acupuncture license, and I also have insurance since I've, since I started out of school, just because, you know, I actually travel to a couple of clients' houses and do the acupuncture there. So yes, I have the licensing with the net, the national, the state of Minnesota Medical Board, and the insurance, American Acupuncture Board Insurance.
Lee?
I don't have any questions.
See, I'll come back to you.
Nothing at this time.
Mercy?
Is there any, just curious of all the different things, is there any noise or music or things like that that could potentially be added?
No, it's very quiet, very, I generally see a patient, if it's the first time, I will see them do an assessment, an intake. So that patient I would see probably about an hour and a half to two hours. A return patient would be maybe an hour at the most. And they just come in and go right to their table, massage table, lay down. Right now, I don't have any kind of central music, so it's just quiet, and that's okay too.
And is it all indoors? Is there any?
Yep.
And then signage? Can you, I think your request had signage in it.
Yeah, I have one of the outdoor A-frame signs. I could just set that on my porch because it's, there's no need to really put it out on the road or anything. Because they know where they're coming, and if they have the address, then, but to identify it, maybe to have the signage on the porch would be appropriate, so.
Lee?
Nothing.
Tracy?
When I went by and took a look at it, it looked like it was a nice facility with the lower level being accessible to the parking area very easily. So, good to me. And it also looked like you're pretty well isolated from your neighbors. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm by myself on Sun Valley Drive, actually. And we're across, across from Sun, something that's not developed at all.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Mark, any comments?
Look, Tracy finished?
Why, why, and then, let's see, it would seem to me that if we approve it, we would want to have some kind of a condition on the sign, that it would not be down on the street, it would be up on, in your lot there, right there. Maximum employees, just one. Hours of operation, I think we ought to have something in there, so we don't want folks coming and going at 11 o'clock at night. No other comments or questions?
Mark? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, you had mentioned that you have no employees. So the clientele that you have, would they be cash paying or check paying clientele? Or, so you wouldn't have to bill through the insurance company even though you're registered to do so, or would you?
I'm only choosing one insurance, the veterans.
Okay, so.
I want to treat the veterans. I don't want to take any other insurance, so everybody else is yes, cash.
So, so if you, so you have the capacity to, you wouldn't have to hire an outside firm or a company to handle the insurance billing? Because I know that that can be a cumbersome nature with subrogation and?
Yes.
Okay.
You're correct.
All right, thank you.
I want to add something. My steps are made with patio block. They've just been kind of thrown together. My siding, which looks like, I'm calling it riverstone, but I don't think it is. It's the big flat pieces of stone. Part of my house, outside of my house has been done. It has not been finished. That needs to be done. I did talk to Chuck Butcher. He has rolling rock landscaping. And I spoke to him today about my steps that are just made with patio block, and the fact that I need a ramp. I need probably better, more, more permanent steps, and I need a ramp because I need to be wheelchair accessible. So I spoke to him, he's really busy, but he said to facilitate me getting patients in and out by wheelchair, he would come and probably get something done within the next three weeks, if that is. I mean, is that something I have to get okayed first?
We would look at it to make sure that it meets the setbacks, but other than that, it's in-ground, and we wouldn't even look at that. It is, the lot is very big, so we're not dealing with impervious coverage or anything like that. So I, I think it's going to be a formality, just to review the plans.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I had one other question. I think you mentioned in your application something about the only refuse would be needles?
As far as?
Well, medical, medical waste.
It's just needles, correct?
Okay, there's no chemicals or?
No, no, I'm doing, using a biodegradable cleanser, so, no, just the needles.
Any other comments, questions?
I do have one.
Okay, good.
You said hours of operation eight to five. I know some people might require after-work hours. Would you ever foresee going later? I mean, if we put this in a proposal, what would be the latest you would foresee seeing?
I mean, I'm not really sure how to respond to that, because if I had a particular patient that said, you know, they only have this day available and can't come in till seven, I could accommodate them, but is that going to, I mean, that's not within the realm of what we're talking about with time parameters. So is that an issue? I don't know.
Jerry?
I think I can address that. I think you can start out with basic rules of eight to five, and if in fact it needs to be adjusted, she can come in front of you and request an adjustment for a different, different hours. But I, I think you can deal with it that way. Based on what she has told us this evening, there are some things that are unknown at this point. And we might have to be a little flexible in the, in the future, more than we are today.
Okay, if there are no other questions, Jerry would, thank you, Star. We.
You're welcome.
We, we will actually be taking official action in a, in a few moments, and we could have a question for you at that time, so, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Again, this is interim use permit application 2021-001. The applicant is Star Jarvis. The address is 8385 Sun Valley Drive. The legal is lot 76, 77, 78, 25th addition to Breezy Point Estates. The zoning is R3, Section 153.033. The applicant, the application is for an interim use permit for a home occupation at 8385 Sun Valley Road, or Drive. The home occupation is the use of a commercial nature conducted by an occupant of a dwelling entirely within the dwelling or accessory buildings, which is clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling for residential purposes. Section 153.003. Interim use permit is the same criteria as a conditional use permit, but with a specific ending at a certain date or when a specific sequence of events take place. Ms. Jarvis is making application for a home occupation at the residence and proposing to operate a wellness clinic in the lower level of the residence. Home occupations are permitted use, are permitted as an interim use in the R3 zone. And again, the interim use is the same as conditions as a conditional use permit with a stipulated time limit. The intended use meets the definition of conditional use and home occupation. Home occupation is permitted interim use in our R3 zone. The use with conditions conforms to the comprehensive plan. The use is compatible with the existing neighborhood. The use would not be interest to public health, safety, welfare, decency, order, comfort, convenience, appearance, prosperity. The use is consistent, consistent with conditional use, and it's consistent with the definition of interim use. Proposed conditions of approval: no outside storage, no street signage, maximum employees zero, all activities to be within the dwelling, no accumulation of garbage. Interim use permit for home occupation is limited to a wellness clinic. The interim use permit would expire 12/31/2026. The hours of operation initially to be 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And consolidate lots 76, 77, and 78. With those conditions, staff would recommend approval?
Thank you, Jerry. Do we have any public input?
Pardon?
We, we don't have anything in writing, correct?
I, no.
Okay, so no, no public input, okay.
I got just one question. Can I ask, Jerry? The last thing, the consolidate lots 76, 77, 78. What does that mean?
Make it one parcel.
So she has to go make it one parcel?
Today, today that, that house is, is over some property lines and things like that. It's never been consolidated. It's, it's a one-page form. It's done over the counter. It's very easy to do.
Oh, okay.
Would that be, I, if I heard you correctly, you're saying you're renting to own. Would that be any problem with the owner?
No, he supports me fully.
Okay.
Okay. Then I will close the public hearing and move to, uh, the next agenda item, which is official action on this request. We have the memo and a recommendation from the city planner would, I would entertain a motion on this request.
I would move to approve it under the conditions that are listed here. No outside storage, uh, signage would be limited to off-street. Do we wanna, do we wanna call it a little A-frame sign, or do we wanna just say no street side, no street side sign? Okay. Maximum number of employees, zero, uh, hours of operation eight to five. That'd be my motion, or the other condition, consolidate the lots.
So with your motion would incorporate all of the, uh?
All of the items, yeah.
Recommendations of the city planner. Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
I have a second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. Any discussion?
This is kinda what you do variances for this type of stuff. I think it's good. I'm bored.
Good. Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion passed. Thank you.
Free treatments for all!
Yes!
The old hard guy.
Good luck.
All right, thank you so much.
Next item on our agenda is open forum number two. We have nobody here to speak in open forum number two, so I will close open forum number two. Anything else for our discussion tonight?
Not this evening.
I had a question. Does the P and Z ever go out to the field and do a field walk? Let's say, like the last meeting? Just a question.
I, I don't know that we've ever done anything formally. I, I do know that some of the members have gone out and looked at individual.
Well, I, I drive by, but, you know, look and?
I, if we had a formal field trip, wouldn't, it'd have to be publicized, wouldn't it?
Oh, okay, yeah.
However.
Two of you could go.
Two, two could go?
But any more than two, it's in a, gonna be an illegal meeting unless it was?
Right.
And you guys offered to go with two of us.
All the time.
Yeah, okay. We went without you.
Only if I can drive your car. Or we can use Patrick's car. I did take the opportunity to go out and look at that shoreline renovation issue, you know what I'm talking about? The one I'm talking, on? On Fon Lake?
Yeah.
Wow. Uh, has, has anybody else looked at it?
I always, I'd like to, but it's private property and I don't really feel.
Well, that's why I'm even mentioning it.
If you, if you folks wanna go and look at something, run it by us, we'll call the, the owners and tell them that there's somebody that wants to go out there.
Okay.
We will do that. You know, let, let us know first, we'll, we'll try and contact that owner and make sure, so that you don't get nailed with trespassing.
Well, that's, you know, that's why I just drive by on the road and go.
Yeah, but you can't see what Joe's talking about from the road.
Right.
I sat in the car and he went down, risked his life.
Man, oh man, I, you know, I pride myself in being able to still get around pretty easily. You take your life into your hands.
Can you imagine how he got all that material up and down that?
I can't.
That bank?
I cannot.
He's got some arms on him.
I don't think he had any power equipment. I have never been there, so I don't know.
I think he had a four-wheeler that he used to pull up his little dolly, but other than that, uh, he didn't, everything that was done, lakeside or down below the hill, that was all done with a shovel and by hand.
And to meet a, I, I just don't know how he's gonna do it to meet the conditions that we've placed upon this. I, I can't imagine a professional contractor blowing it off.
The only way a contractor would pull it off is if he'd go in there in the wintertime across the lake.
Couldn't you just go down there? These track holes and, you don't think it's that steep, huh?
No. Roger, you can, you can hardly make it down there on foot. Uh, he's got his, his work cut out. Have, have you looked at it, Mark?
At Fon Lake Road? No, I've driven by it several times on the way to Crosslake Demolition, but I haven't gone down there to see his, uh, progress.
I'd just be interested in what a professional would, uh, would say about this.
The block structure that he's using, I mean, those are large stacks of stone, so they're engineered for retaining some serious weight. You capped it at four feet, so retention of dirt and sand with any type of geotextile or drainage rock or whatever behind it is gonna keep that thing in place for years. So I, I, I think you made the right decision. Uh, I think cosmetically, it'll be very appealing for lake shore frontage, uh, as well as, you know, usability for the family themselves as a beach, you know, portion. Uh, looked like he had a small walking path too, which I assume would lead down to the docking area where they would launch their pontoon boats or other, you know, watercraft from.
Does he live across the road?
Yes, he li, yeah.
He does?
He owns that property, his, his grandfather's renting that property from him.
Oh, okay.
That's the principal, the house is over there.
All right, that's a, uh.
I, I think, Mark, you would have to launch a boat someplace else on the lake and bring it to that spot. I, I, I can't imagine, ever.
I just meant, uh, launching off the dock.
Oh, off the dock, oh.
Yeah, not, not actually positioning him to the water, but yeah.
We had a deadline for him to have it done, didn't we?
September, right?
September.
But then he can't.
Last conversation, he intends to abide by that.
Wow.
But question, if he wants an extension, he can come and get an extension, correct?
He'll be in to ask for it, I'm, if, if he needs one. I don't think we can let it go on forever, though.
No.
Quite frankly, I think that being hard on, on the September date is, is to, uh, his and our benefit, along with his neighbors.
It looks like he has it silt screen reasonably well, but, man, oh man, did that guy chew off a chunk?
It's a labor of love.
Ah, wow. Anything else? Any, anybody else? Well, thank you all, all adjourned meeting. Meeting adjourned.